Good evening. My name is Beth Margeson and on behalf of the Portsmouth Public Library and the Citizens for Voter Education, welcome to this evening's Candidates Forum. Before we get started, myself and the other members of our group would like to pay respect to Elaine Syracusea. Elaine was a longtime member of this group and she passed away last October and we want to remember her and send our sympathies to her family. Tonight, we'll hear from candidates for Fire and Police Commissions and School Board. There are two candidates running for one open seat on the Fire Commission, although one of the candidates, Michael Hughes, could not be here tonight. There are two candidates running for one open seat on the Police Commission. There are seven candidates running for four open seats on the School Board, although one of the candidates, David Lee Hudson, could not be here tonight. The election will be held on Tuesday, November 7th. The polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Polling locations are as follows. Ward 1, New Franklin School. Ward 2, Portsmouth Middle School. Ward 3, Portsmouth Senior Activity Center. Ward 4, Dondaro School. And Ward 5, Little Harbor School. If you are unsure where to vote, you can check out the City Clerk section of the city website at www.cityofportsmouth.com. Call 610-7425 or email the City Clerk at cityclerk@cityofportsmouth.com. If you are not registered to vote, you may register to vote at the City Clerk's office during regular business hours. There will also be a registration event at the Portsmouth Public Library on October 18th from 11:00 to 12:30, and you can also vote at the polls on Election Day. To register, you must show proof of citizenship such as a birth certificate, passport, naturalization papers, a citizenship affidavit, or any other document deemed reasonable by the registrars. You must show proof that you are 18 or older, and proof of residence such as a utility bill, rental agreement, or mortgage statement. The document must show your street address. No P.O. boxes or business addresses are acceptable. The voter ID law requires that you show a photo ID in order to vote. You may use a valid driver's license, DMV ID card, U.S. Armed Services ID, U.S. Passport, valid New Hampshire Student ID card, or any ID deemed acceptable at the polls. If you do not have a photo ID, simply fill out a challenge voter affidavit. You'll receive a letter from the Secretary of State requesting information that you voted. Simply return the confirmation, your vote will be counted. Absentee ballots are now available. You may vote by absentee ballot if you will be absent from the city on Election Day, absent due to religious observance, physical disability, or absent due to employment, which involves the care of children or infirm adults, with or without compensation, meaning whether paid or unpaid. Members of the audience here tonight are invited to submit written questions for the candidates. There are pencils and note cards on the chairs for this purpose. Just raise your hand and your question will be picked up. If we receive multiple questions on the same topic, they may be combined. This program is being broadcast on Channel 22 and will rerun now between now and Election Day. Now let us hear from the candidates themselves. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement tonight in which they will answer the question, "What made you decide to run for this position?" We will first hear from Fire Commission candidate Jackie Calley-Pitts.
I need my cheaters. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight and for listening to me. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Jackie Calley-Pitts, and I have been privileged to serve the city of Portsmouth for many, many years. Too many. My first adventure into service in the community was the 350th Parade. I never write anything down, but I wanted to be sure that I hit the points I thought were important. I'm going to give you a thumbnail resume. I was in the legislature for 26 years. I was on the school board. I'm currently on the recreation board, and this will be my 39th year on that board, so I've seen a lot of changes. And I volunteer my time in organizations. Some of you may have seen me around in a bright 400th shirt walking around at just most of the events, and I do Strawberry Bank, and I love Portsmouth. When I came to Portsmouth, I needed an open door, and I got it. I have long admired our first responders, but have a special place in my heart for the men and women of the Fire Department. I have personally witnessed and been a beneficiary of their heroic efforts to save lives and property, and they do so in such a professional and kind manner. Over 5,000 times this year, that's the number of calls they took. The Fire Commission works with the Fire Department to maintain its standard of excellence in its primary tasks and many additional tasks that they have to do, including hazardous waste. I believe that there should be more transparency in the Commission's proceedings. I believe there should be more fire safety education and information about what to do in an emergency. Education and perhaps some more drills about what we do if there's a catastrophe. I can't imagine what would happen if we got eight inches of rain like New York. I promise you that I will be dedicated and work hard to see that a top-notch department stays that way into the future while being physically responsible. I am asking you to please vote for me when you go to the polls on November 7th. Thank you very much.
Can you take your seat, Jackie, please?
Take my seat.
Yes. Take my clip?
Yes. Okay.
So now, Jackie, we have three questions for you, and you'll have one minute to answer each question. The first question is, do you support the pay increases recently passed by the City Council?
Yes, I do. It is very difficult to get help, and a couple of our departments are really lacking help. So we have to stay competitive with the people around me. I'm going to give you one quick instance at the fireworks. I was asking one of the policemen, "Don't you work in Portsmouth? You live in Portsmouth?" He said, "No, I can't, not right now." And he went to another district and neighboring town that had better pay.
The second question is, are there other reasons besides low starting pay that may make it hard to recruit individuals to work for the Fire Department?
I think so. I don't know for sure, but I think that happens in every business. I was on the Executive Committee and the head of the Sheriff's Committee for 26 years, and I know what part of the problem of us recruiting dispatchers, which is vital to you and us, was the working conditions. So I believe that adds to it. There are multiple reasons.
And the final question is, do you see the role of a Fire Commissioner as advocating for the Fire Department or providing civilian oversight?
Well, I think the Fire Commission is the one that provides the civilian oversight. The Fire Chief is the one who will advocate for what he needs to the Fire Commission, which will then recommend to the City Council. So that's what I think his role. I think he has to keep his department intact and whole.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes the Fire Commission Candidates Forum. So I will ask Jackie to please take her seat in the audience, and I will call up Mr. Gary Dozier, if you would sit here, please, sir, and Francesca Marconi-Fernold, if you could please sit here. So first, we will hear from the candidates on their opening two-minute statement. What was the reason that you ran for this position? Mr. Dozier will be reading his statement and taking questions from the table, and Ms. Fernold will be reading her statement from the podium and then taking the questions from her seat. Thank you.
Should I start right now? Do you want me to start right now?
Yes, please.
Okay. Greetings, everyone. I'm a 77-year-old guy who calls Portsmouth my hometown. I was born in the Naval Hospital on CVI Island. My dad was a career submariner in the Navy, and my mom was the daughter of two Ukrainian immigrants who chose the seacoast to raise their family of nine kids. Portsmouth is in my blood, and as a result of cuts and scrapes as a kid, my blood is in Portsmouth. I have lived here most of my life. My schooling began in kindergarten in Portsmouth and continued through graduation at Portsmouth High School. I went on to college at UNH and Plymouth State. My career has taken me in three diverse directions. My initial foray was in printing, publishing, graphics, and digital imaging. Next, I developed a potting soil that I sold throughout central New England. Finally, I spent the bulk of my career in information technology. During much of my career, I taught and trained. Throughout my life, I have traversed through villages and communities of Portsmouth, shopped in many of its stores, ate in our extraordinary restaurants, had my hair cut in several different barber shops, and spent countless hours in the four movie theaters in town before their demise, and many summers in Prescott Park and evenings at the Music Hall. I have a lifetime membership in our fair city. The time has come for me to give back for my brain and my heart, for my skills in critical thinking, and my appreciation for all that is fascinating about this city. I do not seek recognition. I simply want to offer rock-solid dedication to maintain and improve the services of the Portsmouth Police Department as it meets the challenges and demands of Portsmouth mushrooming into the next decades.
Thank you, Mr. Dozier. We will next hear from Francesca Marconi-Fernold.
My name is Francesca Marconi-Fernold. I'm a Portsmouth native, a lifelong resident, a local business owner, a taxpayer, and a fun fact, last child born in Puddledock. I met my husband of 30 years in the second grade at St. Patrick's School. We have one grown daughter. What made me decide to run for this position? Well, I've raised a family, grown a business, taken care of an elderly parent, and now I have time to give more back to my hometown. My mother was a Portsmouth City Councilor for 14 years, and she instilled in me the importance of serving the community, giving a voice to those who might not be heard and representing those that could be harmed by the very government that represents them. As a lifelong resident, local business owner and taxpayer, I offer a unique perspective to work with the Board, the City Council, the Police Department to continue to keep the residents and visitors of Portsmouth safe. I think there are multiple issues facing the Commission. The Police Commission's focus is to provide civilian oversight to ensure safety, ethical behavior, accountability, and operational responsibility. The City Working Group has done a great job in considering the needs of the department in its site selection process, as well as keeping the finances and future growth in mind. I'm sure the group will make sure the new facility improves the operation of the Police Department. There are also resource challenges. As everyone knows, finding, hiring, and keeping the right people has become more difficult in the past few years. This includes police officers and staff. In addition, they need the right equipment and training to protect and serve Portsmouth. Please consider me when you vote. Thank you.
We will next ask three questions of each candidate. We will start with Mr. Dozier. Mr. Dozier, do you support the pay increases recently passed by the City Council?
Well, you know, I have fully understood it. You know, the contracts are what makes the difference. I'm sorry. The contracts are what makes the difference, and they're pretty well established. But I do support them because, again, we've discussed this and you've heard it before, it is very difficult to find qualified people that can get a pay that will allow them a living wage, and I totally agree with those increases that have been approved.
Thank you. And the same question to you, Ms. Fernold. Do you support the pay increases recently passed by the City Council?
I do. I think pay is vitally important. I think we want to recruit and retain our patrol officers. We would like them to be an integral part of our community and live and work here. Community policing is very important, and I think being able to retain the officers that we need is the thing to do.
Thank you. The second question, we'll first start with you, Ms. Fernold. The city is considering seven sites for the replacement of the current police station. The first site is renovate the existing station right here at City Hall. The second site is the lower parking lot of City Hall. Third is on Cloud Drive near the entrance to Little Harbor School. Four is the Granite Street Ball Field, which is located at 25 Granite Street near the end of the Market Street extension, right as it meets Woodbury Avenue, because I guess a lot of people don't know what that is. Number five is Hislop Park, which is located at 134 Preble Way. And seventh is 35 Sherburne Road, the former Sherburne Elementary School. And then, I think, oh, actually, that was the sixth. And then the seventh is the Parrot Avenue Parking Lot. What location do you prefer?
I went to one of the presentations that the Working Committee put forth here at this meeting hall here. I was very impressed with the committee and their selection process and how they methodically went through each site and compared their apples and apples. My personal opinion, after looking at all the information, the pros and cons, and I suggest that everyone go to the website and look at everything and take the survey, my favorite stands out to me is Granite Street. Fiscally, a good spot, and a good physical site as far as building. There aren't a lot of limitations, wetlands, et cetera.
Thank you. And I'll ask the same question to you, Mr. Dozier, and I will actually repeat it. The city is considering seven sites for the replacement of the current police station. Number one is to renovate the existing station at City Hall. Number two is the lower parking lot of City Hall. Number three is on Cloud Drive near the entrance to Little Harbor School. Number four is the Granite Street Ball Field, which is located at 25 Granite Street near the end of the Market Street extension right as it meets Woodbury Avenue. Number five is Hislop Park, which is located at 134 Preble Way. Number six is 35 Sherburne Road, the former Sherburne Elementary School. And number seven is the Parrot Avenue Parking Lot. Which location do you prefer?
I grew up in Panaway Manor for most of my youth, and I would really think that 35 Sherburne Road looks like, in my opinion, the best place with the space that's available. And I realize that people from Panaway Manor have some concerns, but, you know, it's just a difficult decision. I think the other locations, except for maybe Granite Street, I think the other locations are easy to rule out simply because of something in the description that says it's not really going to be favorable for a police operations center.
Thank you. And the final question, I'll start with you, Mr. Dozier. What are your thoughts on the implementation of body-worn cameras and in-car video?
I feel very strong that body-worn cameras are very significant. There's so much that goes on with people who act up, who are DUI, who are criminals, who are problematic in one way or another. And, you know, when it's his word against his word, her word against her word, I think that having body-worn cameras will help clarify in much of that. So I feel strong about yes for body-worn cameras.
Thank you. And the same question to you, Ms. Fernold. What are your thoughts on the implementation of body-worn cameras and in-car video?
I think both are really important. I think it protects the citizens. I think it protects the officer. I think it would cut down on any litigation from any nonsense that someone may present to an officer. I think it is not something you can jump into right away. I think you have to find out which camera, which company are the best ones to give you what you're looking for for your department, and I think overall, it's a good move.
Okay. Thank you. And that is the end of the forum for the Police Commission candidates. So I'll ask the candidates to please take your seats in the audience, and I will ask the School Board candidates to please come up and arrange yourself alphabetically, the beginning of the alphabet here, and then continuing on over there. And while you're doing that, I will... One of the candidates for School Board could not be here tonight, and that is David Lee Hudson, and I will be reading his statement for him prior to the other candidates reading their statements. So the School Board Candidates Forum...
I go by Beckstead Muskie.
Okay, we're having some problems.
Oh, you're here, Ben Bill here.
I don't want to, but I think that's what's going to happen.
If we know where ABC is.
Okay, so just a note for our technician in the booth. Genevieve Beckstead Muskie is actually at the front. I had actually had you at the end, so I hope that everybody's names show up correctly. So as with the other candidates, we will be asking the candidates here to read a two-minute statement, answering the question, what made you decide to run for this position? And then after that, we will ask a series of nine questions. It'll be three rounds, one question to two individuals and so on. And then in the fourth round, the candidates will answer a question that is, that they did not get in one of the first three rounds. So they'll be able to pick a question that they would like in the first three, from the first three rounds. Prior to the candidates coming up, I will read Mr. Hudson's statement. My name is Lee Hudson. I'm not, obviously. I am the father of a four-year-old son who is MECP2 duplication syndrome superhero, a rare neurogenic disorder, and preschooler in the Portsmouth Early Ed Program at Little Harbor School. My son is a student with his whole Portsmouth public education ahead of him. I am running for school board because I appreciate the efforts to provide an inclusive and accessible public education as demonstrated, for example, by the recently revised policy on student gender identity and expression, and efforts to develop a portrait of a graduate. I want to serve to expand upon those efforts by addressing the significant student demographic with special needs and disabilities. We expend a significant portion of the district's special instruction budget placing those students out of district, when I believe we should serve them within our own public schools. When we are not purposefully inclusionary, we are unintentionally exclusionary. When we choose not to push ourselves to be inclusive within public education, we perpetuate exclusion in the community, and acceptance of that within other key areas of development such as employment, skills training, and health services. I would like to be on the school board to help our students prepare for their journey, one that will include diversity in many forms and prepare them to help us all develop greater cultural competence within our community. And again, that is a statement from Mr. David Lee Hudson. With that, we will ask the candidates to come up to the podium, and we'll start with Ms. Muskie.
My name is Genevieve Beckstead Muskie. I am running for position in school board. I've grown up in Portsmouth, attended Don Darrow for Elementary, Portsmouth Middle School, formerly Portsmouth Junior High, and graduated from Portsmouth High School. I am a resident of Portsmouth and reside here with my husband Sean and my 12-year-old daughter Sloan, who currently attends the Portsmouth Middle School. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Admin with a concentration on industrial organizational psychology. I only tell you that because that is something that I just recently accomplished last year. I come to you today with no set agenda. I have chosen to run in an effort to provide support for our faculties, hope to be a positive influence on the current board while offering a listening ear to all who are looking to be heard. I tend to offer a calming voice, helping to create an environment where everyone and anyone feels welcome to address and present their thoughts and opinions without prejudice. One item I believe in is transparency, and I feel that because I myself am transparent, no one will be forced to guess who I am, how I feel, or what I stand for. Lastly, I'm a proponent of preparation. Being prepared for the unknown, understanding where to set our focus, and become aware of goals should be a priority. I will work to increase the level of communication, will stand behind the set goals, and an effort to create an environment for education that meets the needs of our faculty, our students, and our community. I ask you for your support in this election, and I thank you for your time.
Next, we will hear from Bill Blum.
Thank you for setting us up and having everyone here tonight. My name is Bill Blum. I am a resident, I've been a resident of Portsmouth since 2004. I am non-binary and also proud to live in this community that is so supportive of people like myself. The reason I'm running for school board is I spent a lot of my time professionally in the automotive industry. I was an auto technician by just basically walking in the door, and the person who owned the shop believed in me. So I was taught by the person who owned the auto repair shop. So since then, I've been a advocate and have volunteered many, many hours at high school automotive programs. I volunteered for five years at Portsmouth High School to help develop that program. I was on board when Mr. Lilly received the scholarship award a couple of years ago. I also spent 15 years at the Seco School of Technology, right when they first got that new building, and also during that time was presented with the Champion of Children's Award from SAU 16. So I come from a process-driven mindset. I also am transparent in everything that I do. Professionally, I come from the business world. My last position found me as a Director of Operations. I've served on boards at our local church, and I've also done a lot of advocacy work up in Concord to help be the voice of the unspoken. I feel that there's a lot of people in my community and in our community as a whole who are afraid to live authentically, so I'm here to represent them, to give them a voice, and to also ensure that this community continues to be the safe and welcoming space as it is the city of the open door. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Patricia Tish Campbell.
My name is Tish Campbell, and I am running for a seat on the Portsmouth School Board. I've been a Portsmouth resident for 35 years. My husband and I raised our two sons through the Portsmouth School System. Portsmouth provided my boys with a solid love of education, adventure, and community service. They are both following their passions in college, much thanks to the support they received from their teachers throughout the years. I myself am a Portsmouth High alumni. Portsmouth High School gave me the opportunity to enter the office and bookkeeping field right after graduation. I was an active volunteer at Don Darrow Elementary School when my sons were students there. Volunteering gave me a love of education, and at the age of 40, I decided to go back to college and complete a degree in education with a focus on special education. I received my degree, and after doing an internship at Don Darrow, I became a certified elementary education teacher with an additional certification in special education. I spent the next four years working in both a public school and a nonprofit school with a focus in the special education department. I understand firsthand the joy and struggles teachers face every day. I've always wanted to be a part of the Portsmouth School Board. However, raising kids and helping to care for an aging parent took all of my additional time. My two sons are now in their second half of college, and unfortunately, I lost my dad at the beginning of this year. I now have the time to commit to a seat on the Portsmouth School Board. My ties to Portsmouth are strong. I pledge, if elected, to try my very best to be an advocate for the students, teachers, and staff of the Portsmouth School System. I am committed to continuing the excellent education Portsmouth has to offer to our students and make the most of their time in the schools, whether their path is college, the military, or the trades. Every student has a place in the Portsmouth School System. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from incumbent school board member, Pip Clues.
My name is Pip Clues. I am also a lifelong resident of Portsmouth, and as Beth mentioned, a current school board member. I wanted to thank the citizens for voter education for this forum because I think that having access to information about candidates is just so critical to making informed decisions at elections. So thank you. And I also wanted to thank my fellow candidates for stepping up to run because I can say from experience that both running and holding an elected office for your community is not always an easy job. So thank you. And as I said, it's not always easy. It has been a real challenge, especially with the pandemic, over the last four years. But we are now coming into such an exciting time, and this is why I'm here now to run again, because we have a lot of transition happening right now. We've had a new principal at the high school, a new superintendent, and a new assistant superintendent come in. And so I see so much potential in front of us, and I'm so excited to be a part of that. And I felt as though having some continuity across the election cycle was really important. On a personal note, I am a parent of a ninth grader at Portsmouth High. I have another eighth grader who most likely end up there next year. And I said early on, when I ran last time, that my guiding philosophy really hasn't changed. It is that a child cannot learn when they don't feel safe. So for me, the most important thing to tackle before any of the academics is making a child feel physically safe in school, making sure that they feel comfortable emotionally, and making sure they belong. And so that is my guiding principle through any decision I make for the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. We will next hear from Dan Freund.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dan Freund. I am not a lifelong Portsmouth resident. I came here in the mid-'90s to go to the university in Durham, and I decided to stay. I love this community. I love being here. I feel at home here. I have two kids. They're at the New Franklin School, fourth and fifth grade. My son has received special services his whole life. And my candidacy is kind of a surprise to me. I was asked the day before submissions were due whether I'd ever considered running, and you know I hadn't. But as I thought about it, and I thought about my experience, learning the hard way to advocate for my son, I thought, well, you know, that is something that I can contribute to the community, helping families learn how to be better contributors, better advocates, that is, for their kids, because it is challenging. It is confusing how you step into advocating for what you know your child needs, finding the path through the education system, because there are limitations. There are realities to how schools function and what services are available. I know that I don't know everything about how schools function, but I'm eager to learn, and I'm ready to listen, and ask you for your vote. Thank you.
And next, we will hear from Byron Mato.
Thank you for joining us today and allowing us to share our vision for the school board. My name is Byron Mato, and I'm not only a candidate for this crucial role, but also a proud parent with children in our school system. I have a fifth grader at Don Darrow, an eighth grader at the middle school, and a not-quite three-year-old who's yet to age in. This personal connection drives my passion for making a positive impact on our education system. Equity is at the core of my mission. I firmly believe that every child, including my own, deserves equal opportunity to succeed. As a parent, I understand the importance of leveling the playing field, ensuring that all students have access to the resources and support they need to thrive academically and personally. And opportunity is another key for me. I'm committed to helping create a school environment that fosters growth, creativity, and critical thinking. Our children need to be prepared for the challenges of our ever-changing world, and advocate for the curriculum that provides that. Lastly, and certainly not least, the well-being of our students. As a parent, I understand the importance of nurturing their mental and physical health. We need to create safe, inclusive, and supportive learning environments where our children can flourish, not only academically, but also emotionally and socially. A brief note on my background, I've been working in the technology space for the last 15 years. Currently, there is a generational shift with the advancement of large language models, or LLMs, or as it's sort of colloquially known, quote, "AI." I think my relative proximity to this emerging technology can be an asset on the school board, as the implications for our students is still being understood. In conclusion, I'm honored to be here as a candidate for the school board. My personal connection as a parent, combined with my dedication to equity, opportunity, student wellness, fuels my determination to serve our community. Therefore, let us work together for a brighter future for our schools and for our children. Thank you for your support.
Now we will take questions from the audience. I will address the first question to the first two candidates, and it is, what do you hope to accomplish during your term? Ms. Muskie?
Again, I actually have no agenda. My hopes are to create an environment where all feel heard, where all feel that they're not judged, where everyone can present and are allowed the opportunity to relay their opinions without bias, without prejudice. I believe that everybody has a right to an education. I believe our faculty have a right to support by the board. I believe that, that's what I believe.
I have the same question to you, Mr. Blum.
So what I would like to accomplish is to see continued movement in the trades. Being someone who comes from the trades, I want to highlight that as an excellent opportunity to, that is within our community, that I'm not sure is actually broadcasted, if you will. It's almost like the little, the best kept secret. I do know that they lost their construction program there recently, so I would like to see continued focus on the CETE Center. I would also like to make sure that there is always an inclusive and safe space for our youth. They typically don't have voices in places like this, and I feel that I can certainly make sure that everyone has a voice and everyone has a seat at the table physically or not.
Thank you. And the next question is for Patricia Tish Campbell and for Pip Clues. This is a multi-part question. I am concerned about preparing students for college. Two examples I would like to address. Last year, the high school got away with AP courses, which put students at a disadvantage. Another concern is about resources available to students. The middle school does not have access to textbooks. How are they going to learn how to study from anything of substance beyond slides or short readings posted online? I think we are failing our students. It's a mouthful, but I'll give you a first crack at it. Thank you very much.
So, yes, preparation for college is extremely important, if that's the path that a student chooses to go to. Unfortunately, because of cuts in budgets, and I hate saying this, but some things have to be cut. I don't approve of it. I don't support it. But there are resources, even outside of the school, that will help kids prepare for college. Now, with that said, I'm not supporting cutting these programs whatsoever. I was very lucky, when I went to Portsmouth High, to have the support I needed to move further. My boys did as well. They had the courses that they needed and such. So are we failing our kids with that? Yes, in the school system, I believe we are.
And the same question to Pip. Would you like me to restate the question again?
No, that's okay. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Let's see, I really actually appreciate the question. I think those are, these are topics that are very timely, and I know there were significant concerns this past year about the AP selections or lack of classes. What I have learned is that many schools across the country are moving toward a different model, which is the dual enrollment model, where kids are still able to acquire college credits and take high-level classes. Oh, boy. I have a lot to say on these. But I want to address that I think what really happened in that moment for us was actually a real communications challenge, which we are tackling head-on on the board currently and continually, because parents weren't aware of that shift, and that was the real failure. And regarding textbooks, this is a challenge that I'm just facing with my own child right now. I have a hard time with it. My kid seems to do just fine with it. So I think that times are changing, and digital material is where it's at at the moment.
Thank you. The next question is for Dan and for Byron. Have you attended any school board meetings? How many, and what were your thoughts?
I have not attended any school board meetings. Again, my candidacy is something of a surprise to me, but naturally, as I step into this, I am going to be involved. And should I be elected, I just want to reiterate that I am eager to listen, eager to learn, and ready to inform parents what is happening in the school district.
Thank you. And the same question to Byron.
Yeah, thanks for the question. I've attended remotely, so watched the Zoom or the YouTube recordings of various school board meetings. As for my thoughts, I mean, they're procedural, mechanical, government meetings, so I think there's a lot of, I mean, I don't have a huge opinion as far as that. I think the mechanic of the school board is oversight, so I think those duties are performed. I think that it's important for school board members to remain objective and data-driven. So I think whenever I observe these meetings, my general response is hoping that the school board members are getting as informed as they can on the various contexts and applying that with critical thinking. But yeah, I don't have, and I think it's, yeah, I think that's my response as far as my thoughts on the meetings themselves, yeah.
Thank you. And the next question goes back to Genevieve and to Bill. How do you feel about the school budget? How do you feel about the school budget?
Wow. That's great. Budgets are prepared to create consistency, and I have not delved completely into the budget, to be completely honest with you. I've witnessed a couple of board meetings. So as far as my opinion on the budget, when and if I am obligated and are given the opportunity, I promise to be resourceful with funds, listen to the needs of faculty, of facility, of the students, and I will be as diplomatic as I possibly can.
I have the same question to you, Bill. How do you feel about the school budget?
It's a great question. Honestly, I did not look at the actual packet from this year's budget presentation. I did watch some of the meetings in prep for this. And honestly, I come from an upside-down organizational chart, so I don't believe that we should tell the janitor how to sweep the floor. I believe that the superintendent should go to the school board and ask for things based on what he's heard from his people. The, as far as budget goes, I specifically pay attention to, not only is it who is that particular line helping, but who is excluding. Because sometimes it's more about, okay, we're going to spend this on this, but does that take away from someone else? And equity is something that's really big for me, so.
Thank you. And the next question is to, should I just call you Tish?
Yes, please. I'm hoping it's not a multi-part question this time.
Learning loss during COVID is a significant problem for schoolchildren. What more should the schools be doing to address this problem?
That is a really great question. As a parent, during COVID, I did see, I did see the struggle. I think what we need is the, it all comes down to the teachers. The teachers in the classroom are, they see the students. They understand the struggles that the students are going through because of the delay in what they were given during COVID times. We need to listen to the teachers. They have a better understanding of the children, of the students, and they have suggestions of how we can improve and bring the kids back up to where they should be. That's going to take resources. That's going to take supporting the teachers. And it's going to take listening to parents as well.
Thank you. And Pip, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. I remember. I think that there's no doubt that there's significant learning loss over the course of the pandemic. I think on the bright side, the entire world has experienced that same delay, if you will. And so the best that we can hope is that our students will be in line with other kids of their generation or class. But we have, for sure, we have seen that, and we have seen it particularly in the behavior of the students, where they lost a year or more of social interaction time. And I think that is really where, again, we need to support our students' mental health. And we have supported the academics with extra reading support, extra math support, and really just meeting the kids where they are and taking them from there. But again, supporting them, supporting their mental health is really key so that we can help them develop the social skills that they missed during that time and, in turn, allow them to learn from there.
And the next question is to Dan and Byron. Should the schools have goals about improving test scores?
I think it's a valid goal to improve test scores, but in my view, and again, I still have much to learn. I don't know that test scores are necessarily the universal indicator of success in life. And the world is changing, and preparing our kids for uncertainty, preparing them for critical thinking, and adjusting to these increasingly fast changes, fundamental changes to how we live our lives, is something that should carry weight. They should be prepared for change, and I don't necessarily think that test scores, while it's a valid goal, is the only measure of success for our children leaving the school system.
Thank you. Next, woo-hoo, from Byron. Would you like me to repeat the question, Byron?
No, I got it. Thank you. Yes, I think test scores, to me, so something that I always hold to be true is any kind of metrics that's worth measuring, if there's some sort of reward or punishment associated with that metric is like, becomes the game. So if you have like some test scores and there's, you know, benchmarks, and against those benchmarks, you're rewarding schools or you're punishing schools, then you're gamifying that, and then people will just like teach to those specific metrics. And I don't think that's necessarily a healthy relationship. But test scores are a good signal, and so I think, you know, it should be used to inform policy and curriculum. So if like certain test scores aren't hitting benchmarks or sort of where the policy wants to be, maybe it's a good signal to change curriculum or move course that way. But I don't think it should be used as any sort of way of punishing schools, rewarding schools. So again, a signal, but certainly not something we should be driving or gaming in that way.
Thank you. For this next round, I'm going to just start with Bill and then go to Genevieve and all the way around.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have any concerns about school policies?
Yeah, I guess I got to answer that. So my concerns about school policies would be that they are discussed and passed without all parties being present that they affect. I want, if we can talk about a school policy, about how do we, for instance, what time does the bus drop your child off at the corner? Like, that's an organizational or structural change that has to be decided by someone else, and it affects my daughter. But when it comes down to policy, when we're talking about curriculum changes or really larger discussion items, I'd like to see all parties involved, including a voice from the students themselves. I would like to see student representation within all areas of policy discussions. If it doesn't affect me, how can I sit there and say that I am the expert and the one who can answer that?
Okay, thank you. And Genevieve, same question, please?
Well, it's very broad. Policies can be anything from, like you said, time that the school starts to what the children wear in the school. I know my husband and I have probably different views than others, and that's okay. But policies aren't decided by one, or they're not decided by a few. They're decided by and agreed upon by all. So we do live in a democracy. So if there are any policy change to be addressed, it should be brought forth for discussion, creating an opportunity for all to weigh in their opinions. And then from there, decisions would be made to consider how those decisions impact all.
Thank you. The next question will be for Pip and Tish, and we'll start with Pip. There is declining school enrollment. Should city government be doing more to keep Portsmouth a town where families can live and raise their children?
I think that's a great question. And there is no doubt that our population is aging and because of, I would assume, because of the cost of living in Portsmouth. Yes, I think, I think, I think city government is working hard at that right now, and I think that, I hope they will continue to. It is, for someone who's spent their life in Portsmouth, it's sad to see many of the young families being unable to move into town and/or stay in town based on the cost of living here. So yes, I would absolutely support measures that the city council would take to make living here more affordable and keep more students in our school system.
Thank you. And the same question to you, Tish. Do you need me to?
No, you don't have to repeat it. I agree with Pip, this community, it's a fantastic community, but it's expensive to live in, and it's expensive while raising a family. We have two boys. My husband and I have worked full-time, and we also have rental income, which helps us live in Portsmouth. Without all those factors, we probably could not have raised our boys here. And it is just getting more and more expensive. That I would absolutely continue to support the city council's work to find affordable housing, to bring families in, to keep our community growing, to keep the youth in the community, to keep our enrollment in schools up, because that's what's going to keep our community going, is the new families and the growth. So yes, I would, I would support the city council's continued approach to bringing families in.
Thank you. And the next question will go to Byron first, and then to Dan. Byron, what should Portsmouth be doing to address the safety of children in school in light of the threats of school shootings?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, anyone who's a parent has probably, you know, gone through scenarios in their head that they'd rather not relative to, obviously, to this question. I think it's something that's definitely on the minds of parents in the community and communities across the country. You know, it's, it's a, it's more of a, the problem itself isn't the fault of the schools, so it's, it's one of these problems that's difficult to say, oh, well, the school needs to do X or Y when there's like a more fundamental societal issue at hand. That said, I think that while we're focusing on like holistic solutions, like a society and policies that are sort of larger, it's not that we shouldn't focus on the school and sort of treating like specific acute issues. I don't have any like strong opinions about policies necessarily that are like good or bad relative to addressing this issue, just more that I would take a very data-driven approach to those solutions, making sure that we have the correct context, we understand the literature, and make informed decisions relative to the safety of the schools, or the success of students, which, of course, is probably paramount above all else.
Thank you. And Dan, the same question to you, please.
I made some notes on this the other day, and I condensed it down to three thoughts on drilling, training, and auditing the effectiveness of procedures. Because there have frankly been times when I've approached the school maybe at, you know, off somebody else going in, and I found a door open. I think that's an effective way to approach this issue. Looking further, if you look abstractly, address the causes of this. What causes the threats? Kids feeling uncertain, unsafe, addressing their mental health. That can be resolved by teaching them, training them to, on how to encounter uncertainty, how to deal with uncertainty in a changing world.
Thank you. So for our fourth and final round, we invite the candidates to pick a question from the first three rounds that they did not get, but that they wish they could have gotten. And I can repeat the questions for anybody who may have forgotten the exact wording. So in keeping with our recent format, I will start with Bill.
Perfect. I guess I'll piggyback on the school safety conversation. As a parent, yeah, I got the phone call that someone was, quote, going to shoot up Portsmouth High School. My daughter goes to New Franklin. When I got that call, I was actually standing at the State House, testifying to the House Education Committee for other reasons, reasons which the focus should have been on, school safety, and it wasn't. So I believe that the Portsmouth School Department as a whole does a very good job at protecting our students. There's definitely situations where there could be improvements, access, drills, things that have already been mentioned. I really think that more work could be done on a local level, as well as more on a statewide and national level. We can draft policies to ban Coca-Cola in the schools, but that doesn't stop the soda from making it into there in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve?
I actually was going to answer the same question about safety. I did have, we had an incident at New Franklin where my daughter was a student there, but it was after hours. Unfortunately, the information was relayed to us days later, which was definitely an unfortunate. It was a learned experience for the police to share information when it's happening and not when they've had the opportunity to wrap that around their heads. I have seen improvements. Our school got cameras, New Franklin received cameras while we were there, which I think every school should have. I've yet to enter an elementary school, middle school, or the high school at this moment during school hours to not be greeted by a locked door, and I'm happy to say that, too. The reality is, is children are curious. Things happen. Alls we can do is be diligent, utilize the cameras, utilize the resources, and communicate to parents is ultimately the most important thing in keeping our children, our faculty, and our community safe.
Thank you. Well, next here from Pip. Pip, would you like me to repeat the question you would like to answer?
I don't think so. I would like to speak to the question of what do you want to accomplish. For me, that's been a question I've been asking myself quite a bit in deciding whether or not to run again for another four-year term. And the answer is I have a ton of things I still want to accomplish. So I will take more than a minute to describe those, so I won't say everything. But I have had the honor of serving on the Policy Committee for the last two-plus years, and that has been really the way that I think I have best been able to impact the day-to-day experiences of the kids in our schools. And so I hope to continue on that committee and continue our comprehensive review of all those policies which come around every several years. We just keep going and reviewing them over and over and over and making sure they're up to date, and that's a really exciting focus for me. And then I'm really excited about our work on the Portrait of a Graduate that we're developing, and then the strategic plan that will come after that. I'm excited to be a part of that and to continue to try to evolve our vision for the schools.
Thank you. And Byron, next?
Yeah, I was going to take a pass at the, can you repeat the question about AP classes and the books?
Yes, I can. So I am concerned about preparing students for college. Two examples I would like you to address. Last year, the high school got away, went away with, got away with AP courses, which put students at a disadvantage. Another concern is about resources available to the middle school, to students. Middle school students do not have access to textbooks. How are they going to learn to study from anything of substance beyond slides or short readings posted online? I think we are failing our students.
Yeah, so the reason I wanted to talk about this question is because I think the question is interesting. It puts the focus on the specific solution to the problem, and so sort of assuming that AP classes are good in and of themselves, or books are good in and of themselves, as opposed to the outcome associated with those solutions, i.e. sort of preparing for college or having source material. And so I would just say that generally, I'm more interested in the problem than the specific solution. I just wanted to sort of talk abstractly a little bit about that and sort of as a lens into how I would approach problems, i.e. like not specifically solution-driven. i.e. like not specifically solution-driven but problem-based driven and data-driven around those things.
Thank you. And Dan?
I want to talk about learning, the learning loss question, because I had a very different experience. I gained insight into what teaching styles my son responds to. Before that, I had no clue how classes or instruction or special education was being conducted. And at one point, his primary special educator, who was trying myriad different techniques and styles to keep him engaged, at the end of the session, my son said to her, can you be more organized next time? That alone was what opened my eyes to the fact that we need to be our children's best advocates. That's what I want to bring to the table as a member of the school board, teaching families how to advocate for their kids with special needs.
Thank you. That concludes our forum for tonight.
Actually, I'm going to stop you because I didn't get to answer.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
I want more. I was used to going this way.
Like, do I get off that easy? But I don't want to.
My apologies to Tish Campbell. Tish, please answer the question you want to, or I'll give you another one.
So I'd like to address the test scores. I do, I don't believe that test scores are a true picture of the student. There's many factors that goes into a student taking a test. They may or may not have gotten a good night's sleep. They may or may not have had breakfast. They may or may not have gotten in a fight with a sibling or a parent that morning, and it's thrown them off. I've witnessed in the classroom students taking tests. They panic. They have a fear of tests. So they're not doing their best work. And I have seen students in, specifically working in special education, that taking the test has put so much pressure on them, they will freeze. However, given a project that they can research and take their time and not be under such pressure, that's where they shine. So I don't believe test scores are an accurate picture of where a student is.
Thank you. So is there anyone I missed? Okay, good. Okay, we'll try this again. This now concludes our forum. The Citizens for Voter Education would like to thank the Portsmouth Public Library, city staff, city clerk's office, Kevin, who is working the video for us tonight, for all of their assistance in putting on this forum. Our next forum will be for the city council candidates on Thursday, October 12th at 7:00 P. M. Again, this forum will be rebroadcast on the city's Channel 22 between now and the election. And we just want to say, please remember to vote on November 7th. Thank you very much.